This conference will now be recorded.
Meeting to order, we have all commissioners present this evening. If you'd all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Like to announce that all public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted to our township website for public access. Randy, if you would please review the virtual meeting rules this evening?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and the end of the agenda. For all listed agenda items, the board president will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the board of commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, simply raise your hand to be recognized and move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid any interference in the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into that chat box. The staff member monitoring go-to meeting will then unmute your microphone and you will then have the opportunity to comment or ask your question. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. And I would also like to announce that the Board of Commissioners did meet an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss legal and personnel matters. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, which is Courtesy of the Floor. Is there anyone in the public who would like to comment on any non-agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on to our next agenda item. Item number five would be our meeting minutes. The meeting minutes for the February 16th, 2022 meeting will be included in our next agenda, which will be March 16th. We have no ordinances this evening. I'll move on to resolutions. We do have a resolution tonight of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, approving the memorandum of understanding subdivision maintenance agreement. And Dave Manhart, if you would please introduce this for us.
So this is a, both A and B are resolutions related to a water line extension between our Brickyard Reservoir and ultimately Ridge Farm. This is a three-party agreement because it crosses a subdivision, Hills of Winchester, which is Jandal owned, so that's why Jandal, K, and the township are all involved in the agreements. And we have Mark Eastburn from Eastburn and Gray here to kind of go over the legal side of it.
Thank you. Good evening. That would be best so you could speak into the microphone. We are recording the meeting.
Absolutely. So first of all, a good evening, everybody. If I could introduce myself, I'm Mark Eastburn from the law firm Eastburn and Gray. Mark Capuccio from my firm was appointed as, I think, a special solicitor, alternate solicitor for this particular matter. Regrettably, he can't attend tonight. He sent me instead, so I appreciate you for having me here tonight.
Thank you.
As Mr. Manhart just stated, I am prepared to go over the background of this matter. I think that the board is pretty familiar with exactly what led to these two resolutions, as well as their underlying agreements. I guess it might make sense for me just to give a brief background of the matter and then to explain the agreements in a little bit more detail.
Very good.
So there are two different resolutions at issue. Both of them are seeking the board's approval for two different documents. One of them is entitled the memorandum of understanding subdivision maintenance agreement, the Hills at Winchester, and that is an agreement between the township, Jandal Land Company, and K Walbert LLC. The second resolution is seeking board approval of another document entitled improvements agreement between two of those parties, the township as well as K. As Mr. Manhart stated, Jandal is the owner of certain building lots in the township. That's part of the Hills at Winchester subdivision. Jandal and the township had previously entered into a subdivision maintenance agreement in which Jandal was obligated to maintain and is obligated to maintain certain improvements to the subdivision. Some of these improvements include an extension of Penn's Crossing, as well as a water sanitary sewer and storm sewer lines. And the township has inspected and approved, I'm sorry, and approved these improvements, and Jandal has dedicated the right-of-way in Penn's Crossing to the township. Now, as a result of this recent proposal, K seeks to develop a nearby property and as a result requires water service for this new development. What K proposes to install is a 16-inch water line, as well as other facilities, across one of the lots owned by Jandal and through a portion of Penn's Crossing. And that's what has led to these two resolutions, as well as the two documents at issue. So if I could draw the board's attention to the first resolution at issue, this is the resolution to approve the memorandum of understanding. The background for this resolution set forth in the resolution, which I has briefly summarized, is also set forth in, if you turn to Exhibit A, which is the memorandum itself, paragraphs A through E. I'll just draw the board's attention to two of the provisions. This is provision number two, titled Construction of Water Improvements. It's to, the key idea here is that Jandal and the township agree that they will allow K to install these improvements at K's cost and it obligates K to enter into a separate improvement agreement with the township, which is the purpose of the second resolution. Paragraph three of this memorandum says forth that it is K's responsibility to repair and replace the various subdivision improvements that may be impacted or damaged and that the township will look solely to K and not to Jandal for performance of those obligations. There are a few more provisions, however. Won't really review those at this time. Exhibit A to this agreement is the plan that depicts the water improvements. Now, as for the second resolution that's at issue, this is again to asking board approval for the improvements agreement between the township and K. And again, that's attached to this resolution as Exhibit A. And again, the background here is set forth in the whereas clauses of the agreement. And this document is a little bit longer. And there's a couple of key provisions that I'd like to point out just to bring to the board's attention. Paragraph number three has to do with the installation of improvements. And this sets forth that it is K's responsibility to pay all costs for the installation of water improvements, as well as any modifications that may be necessary. Moving on to paragraph seven, it's an indemnification provision where K agrees to indemnify the township for all claims related to the installation of water improvements and it obligates K to have professional liability insurance. Finally, the key provision here is paragraph 13, which includes financial security. This obligates K to post financial security. The estimated cost of these improvements is approximately $252,000. And under this agreement, K must provide a letter to the township, a letter of credit to the township of approximately $287,000, which is 110% of the estimated cost of the improvements, plus $10,000 for the township's escrow fund. Without going into every provision of these two agreements ad nauseam, I believe that the board is familiar with the terms. They've been both reviewed and approved by my office. And unless there's any questions or any comment from the public, I believe that the appropriate thing would be to move the resolutions to a vote by the board tonight.
Thank you very much, Attorney Eastburn. I appreciate you reviewing the highlights of both of these resolutions with the board. At this time, are there any questions from the board?
I have one question. Who is accountable for public safety while the work is in progress?
I believe that there is language under these agreements. If you can give me just an opportunity to review this.
While you're looking, one reason I ask is because I searched through both documents, the word "safe," and "safety" does not appear anywhere in these documents. That's why I asked the question.
And I appreciate the question, sir. I did review both earlier today. I thought that I did see language as to traffic safety in one, if not both. If you give me an opportunity, I can review closer.
There is a reference to traffic control, but there are other safety issues for this type work aside from traffic control.
Yeah, Mike, it always comes back to the contractor for all the safety. They have to be up to the PennDOT standards on the safety. And that we enforce all the time, so.
Okay, that's good. So you've also named the safety standard that will be employed, which was another part of my question. So at the end of the day, it's the contractor who's employed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board on these resolutions? Any questions from the public? Okay, seeing none, do I hear a motion to... Looks like we do have a...
Do have it. Robert Hodges, 1707 Penn's Crossing, I will unmute and ask your question. Oh, it's just simply what I stated there. Will the project affect any homeowner's private property?
No. Thank you.
Just... It's going to be in almost to the side of the road a little bit just because there is one water line already. But no, it will not affect any private property. There is one house in Jandal's development where it is going to come through an easement, and they're already aware of that, and that's why these agreements are being drawn up.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any follow-up from the caller? No, thank you. There are no other questions. We will proceed. Is there a motion to proceed with a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, approving the memorandum of understanding subdivision maintenance agreement?
Make a motion to take A and B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I do need to read the second. We have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, approving the improvements agreement relating to the memorandum of understanding subdivision maintenance agreement of Jandal Land Company, K Walbert LLC, and South Whitehall Township. Do I hear that motion?
Motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second again.
That's okay.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This is all the business I have before the board. May I be excused?
Absolutely, thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item C, we have a resolution adopting a telecommunications policy for public meetings of the Board of Commissioners. Randy, you're going to help us with this?
Sure will. No problem. So we have a resolution in front of us tonight to adopt a telecommunications policy that shall apply to the Board of Commissioners' meetings. This essentially gives the board an opportunity to participate virtually, whether that's over the phone or over their computer. However, a presence of a quorum needs to be at the physical location of the meeting here in the public meeting room, or wherever that meeting is taking place. But this does provide the board an opportunity to participate virtually, which of course will provide the opportunity for meetings to continue. There'll be a limitation on the need to cancel meetings, so this is an extra protection for the board to make sure we can continue our township business.
Excellent, very good. Thank you for explaining that policy for us.
And this does meet our first-class township code. It's practically verbatim in the first-class township code.
Excellent, thank you very much. Are there any questions from the board on this resolution? Any from the public?
Brian Height, I will unmute. Question? Brian, can you speak? Not hearing you, Brian. Brian cites his question in the chat. Would you like me to read it?
Yes.
Oh, wait. Did I hear him? All right, I'll read it. Brian Height, 1273 Eck Road. Will paid township professional consultants and/or staff be allowed to appear at meetings remotely as well?
That's a question maybe Attorney Zader could...
The first-class township code requires that a policy such as we have here be in place for the commissioners as a body if the commissioners wish to participate remotely. There's no such requirement under the code as it applies to staff and consultants. So really, that would be the pleasure of the board as to how it gets handled with staff and consultants. And if the board chose to keep it informal, chose to put it in the policy, chose to add it to the rules that are read at the beginning of the meeting, or amend this policy at some point, that'd be up to the board.
Thank you. Is there any follow-up from Brian? Commissioner Osborne, did you have a comment?
I do. Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. I was going to comment that this was a very well-crafted document, but our township manager, interim township manager, explained why it's so good. But in addition to that, here's what I find is real good, but it also may be a technological challenge for us. It requires that the commissioners or commissioner who is attending remotely is able to hear everything that is discussed up the dais, every public comment, and the audience must also hear, if a commissioner who is attending remotely must also be able to hear what that commissioner has said and is proposing or whatever. So it may be a technological challenge. We might want to test before we actually employ it, but it does give us the protection that I'm talking about, that it has got to be full participation and no shortcuts or no shortcomings, let's say. And it's always been, in the past, one of the bugaboo's about why municipalities didn't have something like this sooner is because the technology before COVID wasn't all caught up to speed, where all these things can happen. And that is, you know, remote being just sitting here, listening to all the conversation and also hearing what a remote commissioner might say. So I think probably the reason for that is they didn't want a commissioner who would just place votes and not be able to participate or not participate in the discussion. So they want to make sure that the commissioner actually has heard the discussion, digested it before a vote is placed. That's my layman's thinking about how this can work and should work.
I would just note one observation, given the explanation that Commissioner Osborne just made. When you look at paragraph five on the exhibit, the telecommunications policy, it says the telecommunications device used must permit the members of the board to speak to and hear the comments of the public who are physically present at the meeting. What it doesn't say is it must allow for the board to hear and speak to those residents who are participating remotely. Whether that's a glitch in the statute or by design, it is a difference.
Thank you for that. I appreciate the comments from Commissioner Osborne and also Attorney Zader. And I believe that we've, at least from my experience the last several months, the technology that we're using now, we've been very successful with allowing the public to actually speak during the meeting.
Just, I just wanted to comment on the technology side. The only, the issue that can come into play is if people aren't speaking into the microphone. That's when things aren't heard online. So it's very important that everybody speaks into the microphone so that it's... Basically, if we hear it over the speaker, it's going online. So it's very important to have your mics on and speak into the mics. And that it should all work.
Thank you for that reminder. Are there any other comments from the board? Or any other from the public? Do I hear a motion to approve a resolution adopting a telecommunications policy for public meetings of the Board of Commissioners?
Go move.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Our next resolution, Resolution D, is a resolution authorizing the South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, to request a statewide local share assessment grant from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for a public works tiger mower. Randy, I have you listed as the person to help us with this.
So the resolution in front of us is a very standard resolution required for most state grants. Basically, this resolution designates myself as the designated official to execute all documents and agreements between the township and the Commonwealth Finance Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant. So this is part of the actual application to the grant that needs to be uploaded into the state system. The grant in front of us here at this point is for a public works tiger mower, which is a multifunctional piece of equipment utilized by our public works departments. In our streets departments, they utilize the tiger mower for roadside mowing, site triangle trimming, and assisting with some heavy brush cutting on roads, as well as even some school district properties. Also for our water and sewer department to utilize this mower for keeping our water and sewer easements open, to access our utility lines in these easements. And also our stormwater department for cutting some of the steep slopes in our retention basin, swales, and easements. The cost of this equipment is $151,815.98, and the full amount is being requested in this grant. This grant does not require a match. Typically, for this type of grant, we'll probably hear about our application status sometime in November. So this was going to be a piece of equipment that we were going to propose in the 2023 budget, but the timing's appropriate for us to apply for a grant to offset that cost for the future budget need.
Very good, thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Do I hear a motion to approve a resolution authorizing South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, to request a statewide local share assessment grant from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for a public works tiger mower?
Go move.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Onto Resolution E, very similar. We have a resolution authorizing South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, to request a statewide local share assessment grant from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for a public works subsurface corretor. Randy, if you'd help us with that.
Sure, exact same purpose of this resolution. It's part of the grant requirement for the application. But just to explain what this piece of equipment is, the cost of the equipment's $25,500. It is a pinpointing leak detection piece of equipment for our township water system. So when the township's out doing routine leak detection, we place what's called loggers on the line to actually listen to these lines to see if there is a leak. If a leak is found, we bring this corretor in and that actually pinpoints it so we know exactly where to start digging on the water line. So this is again going to be proposed in the 2023 budget, trying to get ahead of it, be a little proactive here, and put a grant request in to see if we can get the cost covered.
Excellent, thank you. Are there any questions from the board on this resolution?
I have a question. Just Herb, how are we doing now? Do we have equipment now that's doing this and just getting outdated and obsolete? Or this is not for another year?
Yes, we do have equipment now. It's just that our equipment is very old. And it has some issues to it, but we can get through. That's why we want to put this on to next year's budget.
Good, thanks, Herb.
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Anything from the public? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve a resolution authorizing South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, to request a statewide local share assessment grant from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for a public works subsurface corretor?
Go move.
I have a second. Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And thank you to Randy and staff for your foresight, looking into next year's budget and finding grant opportunities to help with the funding of the necessary equipment. I appreciate very much. Moving on to motions. Tonight, we have a motion requesting permission to proceed with the roof replacement on a township-owned building at 2503 Ware Mill Road. And Mike Cookett, good evening, if you'd help us with this.
Mike, turn the mic on.
Yeah, so we're here this evening. As discussed before, we own the home on the corner of Ware Mill and River Road. It's typically known as the Mill House. It's a historic home. By a simple drive-by, you can see the condition of the roof. It is in severe need of replacement. Went ahead, got three bids. Much to my surprise, two bids came back identical, which I couldn't tell you if I've ever seen before. But just did a little bit more digging, spoke with the public works director, and moving forward, staff is requesting that we move forward with Leah Valley Roofers in the amount of $7,225 to have the roof replaced on the Mill House.
Thank you, Mike. Are there any questions from the board on this motion?
Commissioner Kelly, I have a question. Of course. Mike, I was just curious as to where you put the bids out. How do you advertise the bids?
For something like this, I try to look as local as I can. So I, to be brutally honest, Google roofers near me for a project like this, and I'll try to find the closest, you know, roofers that I can to our township to try to support local. Reach out to three, four of them and get them out for a quote. It is not.
Yeah, the amount of this project is under the bid threshold, so it's not required to go onto PennBid or something like that. So this is something we can simply get quotes for to, you know, help speed up the process.
And Leah Valley Roofers is, I believe, less than seven miles from the township. The other close bid there has, there's about 12 or 13, a little farther away.
Are there any other questions of the board? Any from the public? Very good. Do I hear a motion to proceed with requesting permission to proceed with the roof replacement on the township-owned building at 2503 Ware Mill Road?
Go move.
I have a second. Second. I have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have, at this point, a motion. I'm going to make a motion to amend tonight's agenda. We have a police disciplinary matter, so there is a sense of urgency, and that's why I'm requesting that we add a motion tonight. And I do need a majority of the board to vote to add this. So the motion that I'm requesting would be a motion requesting permission to authorize the interim township manager, Randy Cope, to sign an agreement between South Whitehall Township and the police service of South Whitehall Township in badge number 150, as reviewed in executive session on March 2nd, 2022.
Point of war. You have to make the emotion.
Yes, I'm asking. Yeah, I'm asking right now if I can get an approval from the board to add this to the agenda.
It's a motion to add this matter to the agenda. And once that vote is taken, assuming it's successful, then it would be a vote on the motion itself.
Correct. So I'm looking for a motion to add this agenda item.
I make a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? I have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor of adding this agenda item, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now I will read the added agenda item. We have a motion requesting permission to authorize interim township manager, Randy Cope, to sign an agreement between South Whitehall Township and the police service of South Whitehall Township in badge number 150, as reviewed in executive session on March 2nd, 2022. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? Anything from the public? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
And I would just request that tomorrow, staff post the amended agenda on the township website and also post at the township building a hard copy.
Correct. They will be posted at the front door here.
Thank you.
Excellent, very good. Thank you for that reminder, Attorney Zader. Moving on to Agenda Item Nine, Correspondence and Information. Boards and Commissions, Randy, if you would help us.
Sure. Before I get into the current vacancies on our boards and committees... Sure. Before I, before I get into the current vacancies and on our boards and commissions, I wanted to bring one thing to the attention of the public and the board here this evening is there will be a road closure on Huckleberry Road for some turnpike bridge work that goes over Huckleberry Road. Huckleberry Road is scheduled to get closed on March 7 through November 18th, so this is a long closure. This is posted on our website, and I believe the detour is also posted as well, Herb. So just a heads up for everybody that this is coming, and it's going to be a long closure.
Randy, could we add that to our social media with maybe Parks and Police, just to get the word out? It's an extended closure. Thank you.
Good idea. All right, I can run through the current vacancies real quick. We have one alternate vacancy on our Civil Service Commission, two vacancies on our Landscape Shade Tree Commission, one vacancy on our Parks and Recreation Board, one vacancy on our Planning Commission, one alternate vacancy on our Zoning Hearing Board, and one vacancy on our Vacancy Board.
Thank you, Randy. We have announced these, I think this is our third meeting at this point. So if there is anyone in the public, we would welcome you to complete an application, which you can find on our website. At this point, I would ask the board if we would like to at least set a target date to begin interviewing so we can begin this procedure of filling our boards. Is there any discussion tonight so we can begin to think about when we want to begin to hold interviews?
I have one comment, which is I think we should prioritize the vacancy board. I believe there's a statute that says the board should address that vacancy soon after the beginning of the year. I think I'm correct about that. So for that reason, I just place a priority on that one. The others are all extremely important as well, especially Planning Commission and the zoning hearing board.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
So Commissioner Kelly, are you asking us perhaps after this evening to send our calendar availability? Is that?
That would be a good idea. I was just wondering maybe if we wanted to maybe look to mid-month to begin. So we'll give a couple more weeks to allow the application process if there's anyone left in the public who might want to apply, and maybe we can begin mid-month to look at beginning.
Okay.
Does that sound good to the board? Very good. Thank you. I know it's in formal.
To help the commissioners through this process, can we send an updated list of the applicants we have for each vacancy? I think we just got one or two more in. We'll get an updated list out for the board.
Excellent. That would be great. Thank you very much. Randy, did you want to review the upcoming meetings?
Yep, we do have a few upcoming meetings. On Monday, March 7, we have our Public Safety Commission at 7:00 PM. On Tuesday, March 8, we'll have a comprehensive plan workshop at 7:00 PM. Wednesday, March 9, Civil Service Commission at 1:00 PM. On Wednesday, March 9, we'll have a Board of Commissioners workshop at 6:00 PM. We do have some topics that I'll run through real quick. We're going to discuss a DC and our grant application. We're going to review our civil service guidelines. So the board has an opportunity to get educated on civil service, as well as a multi-municipal agreement with Whitehall Township Police Department. And we also need to discuss a turnpike bridge replacement over Tillman Street and the utilities we currently have on that bridge, and the options that we have. So those are some topics staff would like to discuss with the board. If the board has anything specific, we can certainly try to fit it into the agenda. And I know we've discussed the potential topics for an April workshop as well. But if you have anything in the meantime you'd like us to add to the March 9 agenda, please let us know.
Thank you. Are there any other correspondence or information items from anyone on the board? Anything from the public? Any questions on these? Moving on to Direction and Discussion, is there anyone on the board who has anything to bring before the board this evening? Nothing? Okay. Moving on to Old Business, then. We have Where's Dam? Randy, if you would help us with an update on that.
Sure. So I did receive and attached a proposal for the board's review from Michael Baker to continue the Where's Dam project. This would be for construction administration onsite representation/inspection and closing out our permit required for this project. I'm not seeking any action this evening. I do want to get an additional quote to make sure we're approaching this the right way. This is a rather large project, so something I'd like a little bit more time on for bringing it to the board for formal, formal action.
Thank you, Randy. I appreciate you getting this one quote for us, at least as a good starting point. And I do agree, it's a good idea to have a, an additional quote. Are there any questions from the board on this?
I have a few comments or questions. I guess for Randy. So it's very positive that this proposal says it's not to exceed, you know, the proposed number. Otherwise, that's known as a fixed price, not to exceed number. I guess it's also good news that the proposal includes, call it a spreadsheet, with the scope of work in detail.
The breakdown.
And all, and all the costs. So the, the positive part of that is it lends credibility to the cost estimate. But the other aspect of that is, with that detailed scope, what happens if additional work's required to meet the objective compared with that scope that's listed? So in other words, you can think about this at an objective level. Michael Baker's going to meet an objective, and this is their estimate of work required? What if more work's required, you know, that they should have thought of to begin with? Is that still within the fixed price quote? And then I guess the other case is, what if someone from the township adds some work that, you know, wasn't in there?
Correct. And that's, that's why I want to take a little bit more time to dive into this a little bit more. And our consultant that we recently just brought on board actually has some experience renovating dams. So him and I have been working together here over the, the course of today and looking at this a little bit in more depth. And, you know, we're going to get another proposal here and, and wrap our heads around it a little bit more before bringing it back to the board.
Okay, where we can, I guess I can re-ask those questions when we get additional info.
Yep.
All right. And just one more. I think the answer is Randy Cope, who is the Southway Hall representative who is accountable for this overall project, not just, not just this phase of it, but, you know, when we get into the construction phase through its ultimate completion.
Sure. And that's part of the impetus of doing this. I'm not an expert in dam rehabilitation. So this is certainly an avenue and an opportunity for us to make sure the, the work is being accomplished, that we're actually bidding out. And hence the reason I feel it's extremely important to have onsite representation by a qualified individual to make, you know, to keep an eye on the project, to make sure it's being accomplished.
Right. So it's your role to make sure that happens.
Absolutely. Yep.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Any from the public? Okay, next up, we have Item B, Comprehensive Plan Update. And that's David Manhart.
So as Randy mentioned, we have the Comprehensive Plan Workshop meeting scheduled for March 8. We will begin that meeting with a review of what was accomplished at the previous meeting, where we prioritize goals and objectives, and we'll come up with some propose some new goals and objectives that kind of bring everything that we discussed together, hopefully in a very clear, concise package. I would just also like to add that we're bringing Michael Baker on to help us with his goals and objectives piece, kind of in unlimited capacity, just another head to, you know, wrap around and bounce ideas off of. We had a really good working relationship with them in previous phases of the comp plan and really valued their experience and are excited to bring them in for this piece. So March 8, tune in. Thank you.
And that'll be virtual and in person.
It'll be a hybrid.
Excellent. Very good. Thank you, Dave. Any questions on this? Any from the public?
So we're, we'll be starting the resource protection phase. So it'll be historic resources, natural resources, and agricultural resources are the topics. We get through all that, and we'll move on to utilities.
Thank you for that update. So moving on to Agenda Item 12, courtesy of the floor, is there anyone in the public who would like to speak on any non-agenda items? Sure, come on up. Good evening.
So on February 11, I came down and spoke with the township.
Could you just identify your name and address for us?
Brian, Toronto, 2115 Walbert Avenue.
Thank you.
On February 11, I came down and spoke with zoning about the demolition on the corner up here at Walbert and Cedar Crest. There's no fence that's against building code. I mean, it's just common sense, too. There's a bus stop and a crosswalk right there, and they're ripping buildings down. You got the Country Crossings neighborhood right behind it, and there are still no fencing. You guys have a history of not doing, you know, anything about stuff like this. The Dollar General in Walbert's perfect example of just neglect. So I don't understand why this is happening. I've spoken with Randy probably, what, a dozen times? I mean, either he's incompetent, or you guys just are wantonly neglecting code and zoning issues and international building code. I sat back here and looked. You guys adopted the 2015 code in the township, and according to the 2015 code, Section 3306.1, according to demolition, there has to be a fence around that structure, and the walls must be short as well because it's taller than 25 feet and the walls are not down at this point. So either there needs to be a stop-work order issued immediately first thing tomorrow, or, you know, there's going to be a lawsuit against the township because they told me on the 11th they would take care of this, and we're coming up on a month now, and nothing's been done. It's been two years since the Dollar General debacle has started. Nothing's been done. I hear all these projects being proposed. How do we know they're actually going to be finished? How do we know they're going to be done in a safe manner? I heard them talking ironically about the safety of that road for whatever the river project thing was, yet this road has no safety in place at all, and I don't understand that. And as a person of the public, it makes me nervous to think that my township is slipping from a first-class township into something disgusting, and I'm tired of looking at it. I'm tired of seeing the negligence. I'm tired of hearing all these plans and proposals, being told the law firm is working on it. What more do you need? Does someone need to be injured for the township to take action? You know, if I build a building, I'm subject to the code. You come in and inspect it. If I don't do it right, I don't get my permit closed. Yet, all these people that work projects for the township, it doesn't seem to have any effect on them. In Dollar General, I was told they were issued a temporary certificate of occupancy. That's good for 90 days. This is going on two years. So either it's been renewed at least nine times by the township negligently, or you guys don't care, and you're keeping that building open strictly because it generates tax revenue, and eventually the project will get done. I don't agree with that. I work in construction. If somebody screws me on a job, we immediately hire a new contractor and backcharge whoever did that, and if it goes to court, it goes to court. Why the township hasn't done this, I don't understand. As far as I'm concerned, Randy Cope is incompetent, and he should not be the interim township manager. We need someone who understands building code and is actually willing to enforce this and go out to these job sites and put their foot down and put stop-work orders in and tell the public, like, we actually care about you. We're not in it for the almighty dollar, which it seems the township is at this point. So again, I would like to see stop-work order put down there or a safety fence put up immediately tomorrow because that is a crossing. There's a crosswalk on the front of the property. There's a traffic light with the little hand and the little person. It says if there's a sidewalk within five feet to 25 feet, there must be a seven-foot fence erected. I don't understand how the work was allowed to start without a fence erected. Is no one inspecting these sites? If not, why do we have inspectors? I mean, I'm genuinely confused at the behavior of my township.
I.
I was going to say, if you want to say something first. So first of all, thank you, thank you, thank you for expressing your concern about public safety. That's why I'm here. It's my highest priority. So I greatly appreciate you coming here to express this concern. I'd like to say a sidebar for Randy Cope. I believe Randy Cope is competent and.
I haven't seen it. I'm sorry. My trip, my communications and the track record with it.
Address, I want to address your, stick with the safety issue, but I, I felt, I may as well say that at the front end rather than save it for the backend. I, I think you're addressing a township issue. Earlier tonight, I've had observations about the township over time, all right? And we just talked about a new construction project, and I asked, who's accountable for the safety of that construction project? And the answer was, it's the contractor. And, okay, I accepted that answer. The reason I accept it is, yes, first and foremost, it's the contractor. But then, if you go further, what happens if the contractor is not upholding the responsibility for public safety? And in your case, you, you appear to be very knowledgeable about what the codes are. They're not following the codes, which then generates the safety issue. So I don't know the answer. I'm speaking openly here, you know, trying to, to give some, some type of response. I, I would like to know, as a commissioner, the answer to this gentleman's question. What happens when we have a contractor who is not providing public safety? By observation, or because it's not in accordance with a safety standard or a code? And here's a case where you've cited that specifically. I, I think, the reason I say it's not just Randy's issue, by observation, we've had these situations for a while. We had construction down on Walbert Avenue two years ago, and I called PennDOT, and I said, what can you do about this? Because I observed it wasn't, wasn't a safe traffic pattern going on. So I'm not, I'm not expecting an answer tonight necessarily. I don't know if anyone can comment, but I, I do think the township has a responsibility. I do think the township needs to step up and recognize situations like these and take some action.
Well, and that's what was said on the 11th, was that, you know, because I have the request for investigation into why this is going on. And the woman and gentleman Greg, whatever his name is, spoke with me for the better part of an hour out there and said, give us more time. We will get this resolved. And it seems that, you know, it's fallen on deaf ears at the township. I've spoken with Randy via email, over the phone. I spoke with whoever was before him. I've spoke with everybody I can think of in this township. It's to the point no one calls me back. So there's no accountability. It doesn't matter what happens. It's not if there's laws, it's if they're applied equally, and they're not. And that's the thing. Like, if I want to do something on my property, I have to submit something to zone and go through all of this. There's an inspector that comes and makes sure it's done, and then I get the permit done. If I'm doing something wrong in the middle, you guys as the township and the board and everybody, you have the right to step in here. This is where Randy should be stepping in and removing permits, seizing permits, taking away, stop putting stop-work orders on businesses and on job sites that are doing this. I mean, and that's just the fence. If you want me to go through the list of code violations just on that site alone, I mean, it's unbelievable. There's no porta potty. That's basic sanitary code. Even the job site across the street doesn't have one. There's no fencing around any of that. There's no accountability. So what I need to know as a citizen is, what happens when there's no accountability being held at your guys' end? Because that's what it is. I mean, saying, we need to find out. We needed to find out two years ago what was going on with this sidewalk. All right. And all I get told is it was illegally put in, and it needs to be ripped out. So what's going to happen on this corner here that I'm going to have to fight tooth and nail to make sure it doesn't happen? You guys want to put a wah-wah down this end of town? Well, nothing, nothing seems to be what it says in the book. But when I do the work in the township as an HVAC contractor, you guys nail me for everything, everything. If I don't put three screws in a piece of pipe, you will call me back out there, and you will not close that permit till it's done. Yet, you're allowing this on the corner.
I, I think you're.
I don't, I don't understand it. And it's, it's, it's beyond, you know, we need answers. It's accountability. When does he get held accountable, accountable for negligence? When does the zoning township people get held accountable for negligence? When do the inspectors get held accountable for negligence? When the building falls outward and crushes a car at the red light, and there's a lawsuit that me as the taxpayer will have to pay when you guys settle? Is that when it'll be taken care of? Because it's not, you know, I need an answer of what we do. The answer's in. Because it it's not, you know, I need an answer of what we do. The answer's in the code. It's right there, plain as day. Violation of the code is revocation of permit or stop work order. And it's the code the township adopted, the 2015 ICC. I don't understand. There is no, no, no. I want an answer on when will this be stopped or when will a fence be put up? That's what I need an answer on, not the accountability.
So, okay, let's.
Can I say something here?
Yeah, yeah.
They will be stopped tomorrow morning. I'm not a code official, but I can go down there as a public works manager and serve a stop work order.
Thank you.
But there are things that do happen here that you could bring to our attention in a different manner.
I do.
I mean, we all have a lot going on here. There's a lot of projects. We have a lot of employees. We have a lot of things going. So to sit here and call someone incompetent, I don't agree with you, and I don't think it's correct.
I can provide you a list of every phone call I've made with him and all the.
Well, you never spoke to me, so if you want to speak to me, give me a call, and I'll help you out.
He's a township manager.
He has a lot going on, too, so I can assist him if you're not getting to where you need to get to. So my name's Herb Bender. If you see something, give me a call, and I will help you out. I will go down there first thing tomorrow morning and make sure they are shut down until they have fencing and everything put up.
It's not a matter of if he's busy. It's, he doesn't understand the rules he's supposed to be enforcing. How can you be in a position that you don't understand what it is you're supposed to be enforcing?
Sir, sir, I aim to help here. A moment ago, you said, you you know, you gave us all your thoughts about accountability. And a few minutes ago, you said, let me, my, I'll paraphrase, let me set the accountability issue aside. I need to shut down. Okay, if we if we parse this, you think it should be shut down. You just got an answer from the township, the public works manager, who's out in the field all the time, right? He'll go there tomorrow, and and he'll take the action required to make sure this is either safe, or if not, it's shut down. That's what Herb Bender just told you.
Okay.
Okay. My other, my other comment for the board is, I'm just going to add this. I think this is extremely timely, because what's going on in this street corner, right? I drove by there today. You know, I wasn't happy with what was going on with the the truck moving around and all this. It's only the very beginning of several years' worth of construction centered around the the Walbert Avenue and Cedar Crest Boulevard intersection. And so for that reason, the timing reason, thanks for bringing it to our attention. I I just want to say, I think the township has to address the accountability issue. I I don't think we have the wherewithal to do that tonight, but through some means, we need to address it.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Osborne, did you have a comment as well?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Sir, I'm sorry. I I did catch that you live along Walbert Avenue, on Walbert Avenue, but I missed your first name.
Brian.
Brian. Okay, I thought so. Brian, I've had a lot of people from the public come before me as a as a board member. You present a very powerful presentation with information, which is great. The only thing that I would ask is that you take into consideration next time, you know, to be a little bit more civil, you know, and not point out an individual and then characterize that individual. You'll get the same results, but it comes across a whole lot better, if if you can understand what I'm saying.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to say that, Brian.
Thank you. Are there any other?
Thanks for your comments.
Yep. Yes. And and thank you for filling out the request for information between that paperwork we have. And Herb, thank you for offering to go over to that job site tomorrow and and get that taken care of. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. Is there anyone else for Courtesy of the Floor? I'm sorry, Commissioner Hodges.
Sorry, President Kelly. I had something to say, too. Brian, I really do appreciate you coming. And I also wanted to let you know, I didn't know about it. So in the future, please copy the board on correspondence. Please email us as well. You know, I know Randy is doing us a huge favor. He stepped in as interim manager, and he's got his plate full. I just want you to just let us know, rather than coming up here. You know, we didn't know anything about it. But yes, please, please, please. And that's one of the reasons, that's one of the things I ran on. I want to know what's going on. And actually, at this meeting, I was going to bring up the RFI, because I just had another issue this past week with a resident. And David Manhart was instrumental in helping me. First thing I told her is, is let the board know and fill out the RFI. And just so the public knows, the RFI is found on the website. If you go under codes and ordinances, I have the whole thing written out, actually. You could also go in the search bar, request for investigation. But whenever you have a problem, any citizen, if you have an issue or a concern, please copy the board on it. Let us know what's going on, too, so we're we're not in the dark. But I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you to Herb for taking care of it, and, you know, we'll just keep plugging. So thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Commissioner Hodges. At this point, we will move on to Agenda Item 13, which is, I need a motion to authorize payment of our invoices and disbursements. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have no executive session planned for this evening, so the next Agenda item is adjournment. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Yes, please.
Motion and a second? All in favor, aye. Thank you all. Thank you to staff, Chief Dorni and the officer in the back of the room. Thank you for the members of the public for joining us this evening. This motion.